So with that, it's May 17, and I want to remind everyone that we are live captioning our meeting. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting site where you will find the link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, I want to call to order the work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board on May 17, 2022. For the record, I am going to call roll of board members, and I'll start with you, our student trustee, Mr. Evans.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norini? We know you're there.
Can you hear me?
Now?
There you go. I'm here.
Okay, thanks very much. Ms. Smith? Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. Mrs. Nguyen?
Present.
Thank you. My presence, all board members plus the student trustee are present for this work session. So today, we're going to be providing an update regarding the following item, which is on your agenda, and that is an update regarding our bachelor degree programs and from what, and progress. And from what I can tell from the attachment we all see, received, there's been a lot of good work done. So with that, Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to introduce our presenters for the evening?
Yes, I would. President Sullivan, and good afternoon, board members, members of CEC and guests that are with us this late afternoon. As you indicated, you're going to hear a, and one of our periodic updates of the good progress that's being made on our work with the bachelor's degrees that will be offered in Maricopa community colleges. We're really excited about this work and the opportunity that it's going to present to better serve our communities, to provide high-value, low-cost bachelor's degrees in some high-demand areas. So I want to thank the team in advance, particularly some of those that are leading this effort that you're going to hear from in this presentation. They've been hard at work, doing quite a bit over the last several months, and I was able to attend a session that they had probably a month ago at this point, where they brought together a team from every college and a team from the district office to continue to study this work. So I'm sure you're going to hear about that. I don't want to take any ear thunder, but I just want to say that I've been very impressed with the amount of work, time, and energy that's been put into this, and more importantly, the outcomes that we continue to see. I'm happy to report that we remain on schedule as we had hoped, and we're moving on to next stages. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lashinsky to introduce his team, and then we'll take it from there.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Gonzalez. President Sullivan, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, colleagues and guests. My name is Dr. Eric Lashinsky, and I currently serve as our interim executive vice chancellor and provost. Presenting along with me this evening will be Ms. Bettina Selas, who is our AVC of Academic and Student Affairs, Mr. Matt Ashcraft, who is our AVC of Student and Employee Experience Research, Ms. Helise Agria, our Faculty District Director of Academic Affairs, and Dr. CJ Worster, our District Director of Academic Affairs. This, these individuals, along with Sharon Brooks, who serves as our senior project manager, and also Casey Takata, who is our executive assistant supporting this work. We're all collectively providing our leadership and coordination for this system-wide undertaking. Now, before we jump right into our content and presentation today, I'd be remiss if I did not continue our tradition of a song choice. And the team quite honestly spent some time thinking about this together, and what we came up with is a song from The Temptations, actually going back to 1966 called Get Ready. And we think that song is very important and inspirational for us today because, quite honestly, we spent really this whole year since the bill has passed about getting our system ready for this adoption implementation of our bachelor's degree. So I think you'll think the song's very appropriate because we're continuing to get primed and get ready for the great work that's ahead to launch bachelor's degrees in fall of 23. So with that, next slide, please, Elsa. All right, and our agenda for this evening is outlined here, and let me just go a little deeper for you in that we are going to share with you our amazing work thus far towards our bachelor's degree adoption, and really the development that occurred since we last met with you to talk about the program selections. And as you'll see, a lot of great work has been done. Also, and probably most importantly, will be the support that we need from you as our board members in our next steps moving forward towards approval. So that'll be a big part of our presentation today is really the expectations and the support we'll need from you as the board moving forward. We'll also dive into some of the future planning for 2024 and beyond, and we will definitely leave plenty of time for questions and open discussion. So with that agenda in mind, I'd like to turn it over then to AVC Selas, who will share a quick overview of the timeline and program selections to provide that context for us. Bettina, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Lashinsky. So, next slide, please, Elsa. Thank you. This timeline represents essentially where we are now. Identify some of the significant milestones that we have achieved and that will continue to occur from now through fall of 2023 when we anticipate launching our initial programs. In tonight's presentation, we'll be going into further detail about the items on this timeline throughout the presentation. But briefly, we started with program selection in fall 2021 when we last visited with you and have moved through what we call design and development of the proposed awards. A number of work teams that were identified in fall of '21 and began work in January have completed a significant inventory and examination of their specific areas to identify changes to process, policy, or system supports that are needed to serve bachelor's degree-seeking students. We'll bring forward a full program package for your review and approval in August, and it's anticipated that HLC will visit our colleges about our proposed degrees in September and October. Our goal, as always, is to have the programs fully approved and prepared for student enrollment during priority registration, which is March 2023, with an ultimate program launch in August 2023. Next slide, please, Elsa. To recap, and as a reminder, these are the bachelor programs that were submitted by eight of the colleges with a total of seven awards that are being proposed to align with our legislative criteria. Additionally, both the legislative process and the Higher Learning Commission expressed a significant interest in how we will work collaboratively as a system to meet workforce and community needs through offering of these bachelor's degrees. This led to a regional approach for initial program identification that is in great alignment with our commitment to making these programs accessible to the communities we serve. Throughout the fall and spring, these programs were developed and further vetted, and we continue to feel confident the programs are truly the best first options for our colleges and communities at this time. I'll now turn it over to Helise to take us through the next portion of our presentation.
AVC Selas, we would like to share with you some of the progress that has been made since the identification of programs toward the adoption of bachelor's degree programs in Maricopa. We have, as you can see, engaged in collaborative and initial sense-making with over 25 councils, including student leadership, to involve stakeholders in the process, to integrate their feedback, all in the effort to inform the structure of the work and the recommendations. We began awareness building and student engagement within the constraints of the Higher Learning Commission requirements to not actively recruit or enroll students in the programs prior to their approval. Current and future efforts for marketing and awareness will be discussed in further detail in a few moments. We also conducted considerable amount of benchmarking and research with other community colleges offering baccalaureate degrees throughout the country. These institutions ranged in size, structure, and scope of program offerings, and included colleges both within and outside of the HLC. Many have years or even decades of experience offering community college baccalaurates, while others, like us, were new to the process. It was helpful to learn more about their approach to the work from admissions to graduation requirements. We also attended several Community College Baccalaureate Association events and went as a team to the HLC annual conference to network with our colleagues and get the latest information and research on community college baccalaurates. All of these items were shared as resources with the work teams to help inform our collective decisions. Visioning sessions were also held in August and March to engage in critical planning conversations to shape the initial development and longer-term future of bachelor's degrees in Maricopa. Finally, as the work developed, regular internal communication in many formats was employed to ensure all stakeholders were both informed and supported. These included town halls, monthly meetings with colleges, weekly office hours, and stakeholder messages. Combined with online resources, including timelines and dashboards, the work was tracked and shared transparently with all of Maricopa via our resource site. Next slide, please, Elsa. Over 150 dedicated participants and leads of the bachelor's degree work teams made up of faculty, staff, and administrators from across the colleges and district office have completed their work. I am happy to share with you. And over the spring, they have engaged stakeholders and integrated their feedback into the 101 deliverables related to the needed changes to processes, structures, and systems to successfully integrate bachelor's degrees. The Bachelor's Leadership and Advisory Committee worked closely with the work teams to provide support and guidance for the major decisions to inform our district framework. This slide highlights just some of the significant deliverables from each team. This list is not exhaustive of their work, but representative of the high-impact deliverables and decisions. We'd like to point out just a few so you can see the diversity of work that has been accomplished. In addition, a video that's approximately 10 minutes long has been created so that you can hear from the team members themselves about what they accomplished and what is, what it has meant to them to be on these teams. This video will be included in an upcoming governing board snapshot, and the link can also be emailed to you as a follow-up item if you like. The cross-college and cross-functional curriculum design teams of 90-plus faculty and staff have completed the curricular development for our seven proposed bachelor's degrees. This includes over 100 new and/or modified courses, seven programs, as well as assessment plans to support our students to achieve bachelor's-level learning in Maricopa. The curriculum will go to the governing board for review and approval on August 23, along with the other components required by state statute for authorization to offer the bachelor's degrees, which we will discuss further in a moment. In addition to the work of curriculum design, the budget and facilities team created a wonderful template for colleges to conduct a detailed financial and resource analysis to guide the colleges in the necessary documentation for the legislation, as well as the Higher Learning Commission. The Higher Learning Application Team coordinated Part One of the HLC substantive change application being submitted by all of our colleges proposing a degree to support the scheduling of site visits. And that work is underway, and that will occur after governing board approval. The Human Resources Team found that no significant changes are needed in our HR processes or the faculty agreement to support bachelor's degrees, including no change to faculty loading, compensation, obligations, or evaluations. The Systems Integration Team completed an inventory and assessment of all our enterprise and receiving systems and the changes that may be required to support bachelor-seeking students. The team has begun limited testing and has created an initial timeline to support implementation. All of the teams you see here completed an analysis of professional development, resource, and information technology needs that will need, be needed and further evaluated to support the implementation of bachelor's degrees in Maricopa. Next slide, please, Elsa. In addition to the wonderful work of the work teams that were made up of the faculty and staff from all colleges and the district office, local college teams have been very active in preparing for the launch of the bachelor's degree program. Some of their activities have included a financial and resource analysis where colleges completed an initial draft of the template previously mentioned. Faculty qualifications have been identified through the instructional councils were shared with the colleges, and an inventory is underway of all faculty qualifications. Program assessment, colleges were provided with a template to support them in addressing key questions raised by the Higher Learning Commission related to assessment for bachelor's degrees, and all programs have completed a detailed program-level assessment plan to be included in the governing board package. Institutional plans and program reviews, colleges received guiding documents to support them in how to include bachelor's degrees into their planning and program review processes in the future. And all along the way, the colleges have been maintaining documentation on efforts to be inclusive and collaborative in decision-making to support their Higher Learning Commission application. I will now turn it over to Dr. CJ Worster, District Director of Academic Affairs, to take us through the next portion of our presentation. Next slide, please, Elsa.
Thank you, Helise, and good afternoon. With the recommendations for the 101 deliverables finalized, we have identified the related areas for implementation where additional decisions are needed to support bachelor's degree-seeking students. So on the screen, you can see a non-exhaustive list of areas that may be undergoing changes due to the offering of bachelor's degrees. This is not meant to be all-inclusive, but instead to give a general idea of the primary buckets and key areas where implementation has to occur based on the outcomes and the efforts of the work teams. Professional development will also be designed to correlate with all of these changes and weave throughout the implementation phase as indicated by the work teams. And it's important to note, it's important to note that items that will require governing board approval will be routed through the regular processes for your review and authorization. Next slide, please, Elsa. As was briefly mentioned earlier, we've made efforts to date within the HLC guidelines, which are shared on this slide, toward building awareness and engaging the community in this exciting opportunity of bachelor's degrees in Maricopa. So the current messaging is laying the foundation of why choose us? And so far, these efforts have included things such as supporting the student government, student leadership, and conducting a survey to students regarding interest in bachelor's degrees. It's also included developing a monthly newsletter, which has been featuring the fields that the proposed degrees are being developed within. And it's interesting to note that that newsletter currently has 315 subscribers, and it has a 69% open rate, which is well above the industry average of 28.5%, excuse me, 28.5%. Colleges have been engaging in local efforts to gauge student demand in the program areas that they're developing, and there have been press releases, media coverage, and social media posts that have been created that have been speaking to the development of the degrees to support future recruitment. Colleges have also been engaging with advisory boards and industry partners to keep them informed of our progress, and there's been an investment of approximately $14,000 in web banner advertising about bachelor's degrees, and that investment has produced over 2 million impressions. After governing board approval, but prior to HLC approval, marketing efforts will include sharing more information about the degrees and collecting prospective student interest, continuing to be careful and mindful about not actively recruiting or enrolling students until we receive, until we receive full approval from the HLC. Additionally, we'll continue planning out our efforts for after HLC approval, which will include putting together a team to develop a campaign to identify and cultivate interest within existing internal pipelines. So in other words, attracting students that are currently pursuing related certificate and associate degree offerings to pursue bachelor's degree programs with us. In addition, a campaign will be developed that will be focused on the external audiences interested in the seven programs that we are offering. And this will include connecting with employer partners who are interested in developing their workforce through our offerings. These strategies will be vetted with students and stakeholders to develop the mix of media and support to generate and follow up with leads. Additionally, bachelor's degrees will, will be integrated within all marketing efforts, which will really give us a broad reach with these programs. Next slide, please, Elsa. So as you can see, there's certainly been significant progress made across our system, and we'd like to thank the board for their support and advocacy to date regarding bachelor's degree, regarding bachelor's degrees within Maricopa. As we look ahead, we now like to provide an overview of where governing board support will be requested during key parts of the process of adopting these degrees and programs. Next slide, please, Elsa. The legislation authorizing community colleges in the state of Arizona to offer bachelor's degrees requires the information be provided to and subsequently approved by the governing board related to each proposed program offering. This includes curriculum approval, which is similar to what currently occurs for certificates of completion and associate's degrees, as well as additional items. We are on track to submit a package with the required information to you in advance of, and then request your approval at the August 23 governing board meeting. The package will include a general program information, such as the name and description of the program, what college or colleges and departments will be offering it, the instructional modality, and the total number of credit hours. We'll also include curriculum information to include the standard curriculum package typically submitted to the governing board, and supplemental information such as assessment plans. There will also be evidence of market demand, student demand, projected enrollment, and a summary of similar programs that may exist throughout the state. A financial resource analysis for each program will also be included, or colleges will include a summary of resource needs and identified funding sources. Similar to programs at any degree level, whether it be a certificate, an associate's degree, or a bachelor's degree, resources may be needed, particularly to support program startup, and this analysis is a requirement of the legislation and of the HLC application process. And finally, in line with legislative requirements, we will formally notify Arizona State University of the programs we intend to offer at least 60 days in advance of the August 23 board meeting, which then provides them with 30 days to provide a formal response. If one is received, it will be included in the governing board package. Just one other note regarding the public university notification. Because we do value our university partnerships, we've actually exceeded legislative requirements and previously informally notified ASU, NAU, and the University of Arizona of the programs that we intend to develop, and we've made efforts to keep these lines of communication open throughout our process. So I will now turn it over to Mr. Matt Ashcraft, Associate Vice Chancellor of Student and Employee Experience Research, to take us through the next portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Worster. As our governing board, your awareness of and support for a bachelor's degree effort is key to our success. If you approve as a board the proposed initial bachelor's degree program offerings, when they come to you at your August 23 board meeting, the substantive change application process with the Higher Learning Commission will be completed immediately thereafter. The HLC has indicated that site visits will be required for these new programs and has expressed interest in having these visits be prepared for and completed in a coordinated manner between the offering colleges and the HLC. We anticipate that these site visits will occur between September and November of 2022. Our college accreditation days on officers, or ALOs for short, the district office and the HLC are working closely with each other to identify and solidify potential dates for these visits. The visits themselves will consist of a day and a half of onsite, where the HLC team will meet with faculty, staff, administrators, students, and industry partners from the offering colleges. The visit is much different in scope than the HLC conference and evaluation visits many of us are familiar with, and will be very focused on discussing the new award level being proposed and the colleges' collective readiness to offer bachelor's degrees. Additionally, the HLC has an expressed interest in meeting with either virtually or in person or hearing from our governing board members that are available to participate. During this time, board members may be asked to share your level of support for Maricopa offering bachelor's degrees in general, as well as your support for the specific programs that the colleges plan to offer. We certainly understand that many more details need to be shared with you as a governing board as those details become available, to include the actual dates of the visits, once confirmed, and the opportunities for you to be involved. Our intent with sharing this general information with you at this work session is to ensure you are aware of the HLC's interest in connecting with you during these visits, which will ideally and ultimately lead to full program approval for the initial bachelor's degree programs to be offered to our community. I will now turn it over to Dr. Lashinsky to take us through the remainder of our presentation. Next slide, please, Elsa.
All right. Thank you so much, Matt. Appreciate it. And board members, as you can see, what we've tried to do is highlight the role you'll play in curriculum. That'll be upcoming in August, August 23 at the board meeting, and then also the role in the fall where we have the site visits that'll be coordinated across our system. So that's the work we've done and sort of the role you'll play as we move forward. But we thought it also very important to provide for you some information around our thinking and planning for program selection for fall '24, and also fall '25 and beyond. We know we're really gearing up for fall '23 and the launch, but however, there's planning work in advance for fall '24 and beyond. So with that, we're going to share some of our efforts about our future plans for bachelor's degrees across our system. Next slide, please, Elsa. We do understand that obviously the programs we're launching in fall of '23, they're groundbreaking. They're, they're going to move our, our system and our community forward in meeting industry needs. And at the same time, as we're beginning of this journey, we recognize that we got to start planning ahead for fall '24 and beyond. So throughout the fall and spring semesters of this past academic year, we've been engaging in collaborative discussions around the initial bachelor degree programs and how to grow and sustain bachelor's degrees going forward. The most recent example, which Dr. Gonzalez referenced in his opening statement regarding this work, was actually on March 25, where we had a, we called it affectionately a roadmap for our future vision meeting, where we held that with college and district teams. The purpose of this session was to identify the framework for a long-term strategy for offering bachelor's degrees to meet the needs of our communities, and our discussions, which were very lively and engaging, included a review of community college baccalaureate trends and data to inform our approach, how we can be innovative in identifying potential programs within still the legislative requirements and aligned with our system's priorities, and enhancements to the proposal and selection process for our future programs. So this convening, as well as many subsequent follow-up discussions, led to the establishment of a set of guiding principles that we are using to identify new and scale existing bachelor degrees. Success metrics and key performance indicators for demonstrating success to our communities, the HLC and the legislator are, were also established, and we will create the foundation for long-term sustainability of bachelor's degrees within Maricopa. So in the fall of '23, again, as we've stated, collaborative discussions will be convened to identify the programs that should be offered throughout our system in the coming years, using the guiding principles that have been established, which will help to develop a roadmap for the future. Next slide, please. So this slide indicates the timing of the next cycles for program selections. Approval, approval will be requested from the governing board for our subsequent programs, and when those programs would then launch. As you can see from this slide, the next cycle for program selection will occur in October of this year for programs that will launch in fall of '24. But we do want to make note that has been recommended by our bachelor's degree advisory committee that an RN to Bachelor of Science in Nursing, often referred to as our BSN, that we launch that program within the next cycle of programs. This is in large part due to the fact that there's definitely high demand, high wage, significant community interest, and a workforce gap in this area. Our excellent and strong RN program positions us very well as a system to offer the BSN program. Discussions are currently underway to determine which college will confer the RN to BSN degree in fall of '24, as well as considerations for collaborative offering to support student access and scalability to additional colleges over time. Additional programs may be proposed by the colleges as well in this upcoming cycle. Then subsequent cycles for program selection will occur during each spring semester. So for example, for programs that we anticipate launching in fall of '25, program selection will occur in spring of '23. We believe that moving the program selection to the spring allows for additional time for curriculum design and development, additional time for governing board review and approval, and then obviously HLC approval prior to program launch. So again, as previously mentioned, a convening will be held this fall that will focus on program identification throughout our system for the next three to five years. A strategic and intentional approach will be taken to selecting and developing new programs, as well as scaling existing programs to ensure their success. Excuse me. So we do, again, we look forward to engaging with all of our board members and our community at large, really, and we continue to ask for your advocacy and support as we continue on this journey. Next slide, Elsa. And so finally, to conclude our presentation today, we really think it's important that we return to our why. You know, there's so many competing priorities and interests across our system right now that all this work associated with launching our first bachelor's degrees, at times, quite honestly, has felt quite overwhelming and possibly even like just yet another thing. But we've heard from our students that it is truly a big thing for them that will impact their future. On the maricopa.edu website, we actually have a landing page for bachelor's degrees where potential future students or members of the community, and anyone really interested, can sign up for the newsletter, which was referenced before, for updates on Maricopa's progress. That first edition went out in December and included a survey where we asked, what would bachelor's degrees from Maricopa mean to you? So the quote on the slide is one of the responses that was received, and in part, it reads, "Once I heard about the plans for..." "Once I heard about the plans for Maricopa to start offering bachelor's degrees, and that one of the first seven that we offer is actually the one I needed, I honestly cried." When we read that as a team, and that was shared with us as as team members and part of our advisory team as well, it was heartwarming for all of us to know that the work we're doing truly does make a difference. And we want to share that with you as well as members of our board, because it's a great reminder that the work we do as a system that we do in general, but obviously specifically that we're doing right now in launching bachelor's degrees. Although it is incredibly challenging at times, but the impact it has on our, on lives, the lives of the students and members of our community is truly tremendous. So leaving and ending on that note, if you will, we hope we're, we're getting everyone ready, going back to our song, right? We're ready to launch these degrees. We're getting closer to Fall '23. We also want to say thank you to to all involved and to our our board members for your continued advocacy and support as we continue on this journey. So with that, President Sullivan, we'll turn it back over to you to kind of facilitate us through the questions and answers from our board members.
Okay, certainly. I have the theme song of Get Ready running through my head because I love the Temptations, number one, but number two, it seemed really apropos that you have certainly gotten ready. So thank you for that in this presentation. Board members, I'm going to do the usual call for questions. I'm going to go in alphabetical order, and with one exception, and that is I'm going to start with you, Mr. Evans. As our student trustee, do you have any comments or questions on this presentation?
Thank you, President Sullivan. I do have one comment for once. Instead of a few questions, I just wanted to say thank you for outlining this so much. It's wonderful to see all the progress that is being made and that there is consideration for more bachelor degrees going forward. I know that's one of the biggest things I've heard about from other students. Where they're excited for degrees, they're just hoping, hey, maybe my major will be in there, that sort of thing. So overall, this is just wonderful to see, and thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Ms. Bitter Smith.
Thank you, President Sullivan. I too want to just echo the excitement that you just heard from Mr. Evans and others. I don't know what I have questions, but I just reiterate that I think the focus on the BSN as one of our first degrees is certainly a response to what we're hearing from the community and from the demand. Would it be possible, I know there was a video mentioned, and I think you're going to send us a link. I would love to see that, whether it comes in the snapshot or separately, I think that would be useful, at least for me to see. The other element is the newsletter that is going to our students. Is that something that could be sent? And I don't want to burden anybody else's email boxes, but I would love to see that, too, if that's possible. Can I be added to that list, or do I just go to the landing page on the website and sign up?
Dr. Lashinsky.
Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith, and absolutely, one, we can get the video to all board members, honestly. We've shared it in other settings, and it's a wonderful video. It just helps to understand the scope of work done. And yeah, we can make sure that the newsletter is sent really to all board members, too, so we can, we can do that. Not a problem at all.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, President Sullivan.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith. Mrs. McGrath, do you have comments or questions?
All of my comments and questions were answered by Mr. Evans and Ms. Bitter Smith, and I appreciate that they asked them and that the answers were great.
Well, good. Okay, Dr. Narini.
Thank you. Yeah, no questions. Just again, thank you and congratulations for all the work. It just goes to show you how much, how much behind-the-scenes work has to take place to make sure this is, gets off the ground the right way and, and we really take off with it. So I really appreciate all the work that everybody did to, to put the presentation together, but more importantly, all the work that they've done to get us this far. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Thank you so much, and congratulations for the progress made. My question relates to the two colleges that are not part of this first cycle, Scottsdale and Chandler Gilbert. Do we know if they are intending to participate or if they will be encouraged to participate in Cycle Two?
Dr. Lashinsky.
Sure, definitely. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for the question. And I don't want to speak too much on behalf of both colleges. I guess I can speak a little more on behalf of Scottsdale. But yes, we're engaging in the dialogue with both and encouraged to to participate. And please note that regardless of whether the college is a conferring college, the students who attend Scottsdale or Chandler Gilbert will have every opportunity and ability to engage in the seven degree programs that are offered, going to be offered in Fall of '23. And then moving forward, I do anticipate that both colleges will be engaged in the conversations and have aspirations of launching as soon as possible, if not Fall of '24, shortly thereafter.
Great. Thank you so much, and again, well done making sure you're all so ready.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor.
Thank you. I keep pinching myself. I find it just hard to believe that all of this is is going on in Maricopa after all of these years. Obviously, I'm thrilled to death with the progress and the great work. I do have a few questions. When the Higher Learning Commission visits in the fall, do we know if they'll be sending one team to look at all seven degrees as well as all eight campuses? Or will they be sending seven teams, one to look at each of the degrees?
Great question, Board Member Thor. My understanding is that they will be sending separate teams to be then looking at each individual program. I'm going to put APC Ashcraft on the spot here, but Matt, can you confirm that for me if possible?
That is correct. Separate teams for each program, but they will all be very well coordinated.
Okay, thank you. You indicated that you have already sent early alerts to the three public universities. I'm curious as to whether we got any response.
We received a response, I would, from each, and I would say it was just a pleasant acknowledgement and thanks for the initial heads up. There was no request for more information. There was really nothing deeper than that. It was just appreciation that was sending in advance, but nothing, really, quite honestly, nothing negative nor positive, just a thank you and people notified.
Okay. I'm curious if these degrees are being designed to be ninety-thirty, like some of our transfer pathways with the universities? Are they going to be sixty credits lower division and sixty credits upper division, or some other combination, or it varies?
I think we'll get a pretty strong answer from either Halise or CJ or maybe even Bettina on that one in particular to provide some more specificities because they were part of the curriculum design. So if one of the three want to maybe unmute and provide some context there, that'd be helpful.
Hi, this is Halise. It varies. It's really based on the discipline. I would say that most of them are in the, are leaning closer to thirty credits of upper division, which is the requirement of the HLC. That's the minimum requirement for upper division. But some of the programs, such as education, they're probably closer to, and don't quote me on this, it's like somewhere in the forty credit, forty to fifty credit, upper division range. So it varies based on the needs of the discipline and what's standard in their field.
And then I believe it's the nuclear medicine program where there's only, what, eleven or twelve additional credits needed from what is currently required for the associate degree and what's required for the bachelor's degree. If I'm correct on that, are some of the currently lower-division courses going to have to be converted to upper division to reach that thirty upper-division credit requirement?
Thank you. This is Halise again. That is a great question. And yes, they basically, they looked at their curriculum and really reassessed what was at that three hundred and four hundred level, and they did adjust the courses accordingly, because as you very well remembered, remembered really well that they had a hundred and nine, I think, as a minimum already. So there wasn't a lot to be added. So they reshuffled and more appropriately assigned the courses to the right level of learning and made adjustments to those courses accordingly.
Okay. And then assuming that whatever credits are not designated as upper-division credits will be, well, let me word it another way, that all of the lower-division credits will be charged our current tuition of eighty-five dollars and not the upper-division tuition? Is that correct?
Remember, Thor, yes, I do believe that's correct, and that's, that's our intention. If there's someone on the call that thinks I'm misspeaking, please let me know, but I believe that's our intention as, as our group and our advisory committee.
Okay, so that means that the total cost of bachelor's degrees will vary depending on the discipline.
Yes, I mean, as you say it that way, yes, because the credit hours, correct, exactly. The number of upper-division credit hours will then vary the total amount of tuition that could be charged to a student then, correct?
Yeah. So at what point in your calendar will you be making a recommendation to the board at what tuition we should set for the upper division, recognizing that the legislation limits us to a hundred and fifty percent of lower division?
You know, our expectation is we'd be, you know, following along with the, really, our, our cycle of when we normally request tuition increases and things of that nature. So I don't anticipate at this point in time that it will be, if you will, pulled from the overarching budget conversations we have when tuition comes forward. I think our interest and intent is to have a part of our overall conversation when we bring any tuition recommendations forward, and then inclusive of that would be with our bachelor's degrees or upper-division credits.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions, President Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Ms. Nguyen.
Kathleen, you're going in and out. I missed whatever you said.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. It was just very broken. You want to try again?
Yeah, just one second. Let me see. Okay, I've turned up my sound. Does that make any difference?
A little bit. I could be the only one who's having the cullty. Maybe someone else could weigh in with a comment. We definitely want to hear your questions, so whatever you can do to.
Okay, I don't know what to do to adjust my sound. I've been able to.
Okay, you're good now. You're good. Go ahead.
Who knows? Gerbil. So I'm really impressed with the work that's been done. I will be interested to see when we are further in our process. The universities have acknowledged what we're doing, that they're in alignment with what we're doing. I, 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 I just hope that that's where the three-day colleges are supportive of the work that we're doing, and we'll encourage that. So I'm hoping that we keep line of communication in a way. Sounds like we have that's been done, and that's great. The other thing that I think is really kind of exciting about this is that hopefully this helps with our enrollment for our, the first two years. If someone knows that they can come and get these seven degrees, hopefully being at the end of this and it all turns out the way that we expect. I'm, I, as soon as we can, it's a wonderful way to market. And I think the marketing team would try to promote. I know we can't until they're approved, but at the earliest opportunity, so we can start again age with enrollment and increasing our numbers. So I think that the timing of this helps about the Fall of 2023, and obviously that we can promote the work that's been done here and in alignment with the need for the education degrees that we will be bestowing on our students. So I would tell you, it's really wonderful to see this work and to keep up the process. And obviously, you said you would do this and keep us informed as it, as it continues, and thank you for all the work that you've done.
Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen. So my turn. I'll work to be brief. I wanted to compliment you on, again, another outstanding presentation. It certainly allows us to know our next steps as a governing board. Really appreciate the integration of that piece into your presentation this evening. Certainly, it's not top of mind, but as we move through our work in support of all of the tremendous efforts that you're making to bring this to fruition, we want to ensure that we're both informed but understanding of our responsibilities to support the work that you are doing. So thank you for that. And again, I want to add my compliments and congratulations to all the previous board members' comments about what a great job this has been in coming forward to us. I would encourage you to send the video to all of us as board members and keep us apprised of any communications, newsletters, et cetera, because as we're out in the community being ambassadors on behalf of the district, this is certainly something that we can support and tout, and the better informed we are, the better we are able to do our work in support of all of you. So again, thank you. You're certainly getting ready, and I'm excited for all of our next steps and for all of the, the work that you have ahead of you that will make such a difference in the students' lives of Maricopa community colleges. So thank you for that this evening, Dr. Lashinsky. Congratulations to your team. And I'm going to, then, unless you have further comment, conclude the work session. So any comments for the good of the order, Dr. Lashinsky?
Thanks, Board President Sullivan. Again, just want to say thanks to the, the hard work across our whole system, from our faculty designing curriculum to our staff leads who are working on the different subcommittees. It truly is a collective effort across our system to get to the stage that we are. And it's exciting to hear your, your positive responses about this, too. It feels good from a, from our collective work on this to see the support from the board and sort of the partnership and being in step with each other to move this forward. So we're very excited and looking forward to our next steps, and thanks for all the great questions today and, and the positive responses, too. It means a lot to everybody. So thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Gonzalez, I know you're with us. You want to close this out completely on this?
I would just echo Dr. Lashinsky's comments, and again, thank the team and the leadership, and thanking everybody that's provided input into this process. So we look forward to coming back and providing the updates. And I really can't wait for the day when we have our first students enrolled in these programs that we've now been talking to for, for almost a year. So thank you.
Well, very exciting. Okay, everyone, I'm going to conclude this evening's work session. We do have agenda review immediately following, but I note that it is right now five, almost five twenty, so give me, give us five minutes if anyone needs to take a short break, and I will convene us at five twenty-five. With that, our work session stands adjourned. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My clock says five, five twenty-five, so I'm going to move us forward. With that, again, I want to make the announcement that we are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So with that, at this time, I want to call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of May seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two. Today, we will review the agenda for the May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. Again, for the record, I'm going to call Raul, and I will start with you, Mr. Evans, our student trustee. Are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith.
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Narini.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith. Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Thank you. With my presence, we have seven board members in attendance and our student trustees also attending with us this evening. So as we move through the governing board agenda for the May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, as usual, we will go through the typical elements. We will have on that date at six thirty, a public hearing for truth and taxation and review of our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. After that presentation and hearing, we will then move to a special session of the board where we board where we will both approve the truth in taxation notice of loving increase and we will have the proposal to adopt the proposed district fiscal year budget, twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We will then adjourn that special session and move to our regular meeting with the complement of substitutions, reports, et cetera. I understand we will have a Student Senate report and an introduction of our new Student Governing Board member, Mr. Lynn Burnett, who we look forward to meeting. The chancellor will provide an update, and we will also move through more information around the fact collaboration team agreement that takes effect on July first, twenty twenty-two. Then we will move to our consent agenda, and as always, I'm going to read out those items that are for consideration and allow board members the appropriate opportunity for comments or questions on each item. So with that, moving us into the consideration of our consent agenda, the item number two will be approval of faculty emeritus distinction to Dr. Robert Rivas. Then item three, we will move to approval to implement the fiscal year twenty-two salary increase presented in the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan as approved and adopted by the governing board through Board Policy two point seven, staff compensation and benefits. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on that item number three? Being none, item number four will be.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor.
I'm sorry. It took me a minute to, to mute. I do, I do have some questions around the livable wage.
Okay.
So the background information says that there are forty-five full-time staff employees in salary grades one oh three or to one oh seven who are not at the new livable wage. Can you give us some examples of what those classifications are?
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, President Sullivan. I would ask, let's see, Dr. Jurgen Kelly to come on and perhaps provide us with an example or two.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gonzalez. Thank you, President Sullivan, and thank you, Dr. Thor, for your question. Those are our lower-level employees in the custodial ranks, some maintenance employees as well across our institution. And Frank, if you wanted to add some additional information for Dr. Thor in reference to the livable wage change, please.
Yes. And I, I do have a, I do have several other questions related to that as well.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Thor, there are a number of positions in the one oh three to one oh eight, one oh seven, rather. We have a total of two hundred and eighteen employees in those jobs. They include student services tech, admin specialist, custodian, records, information technician, athletic equipment technician, groundskeeper, and so on. So we have a number of employees, most after the proposed four point one three percent adjustment will be making more than the proposed livable wage. But as you read that item on the, on the proposed item, we want to look at that entire group of two hundred and eighteen. And as we adjust to the new livable wage, make appropriate adjustments across that entire, those entire classifications to maintain equity within the job classifications. Does that address your question, Dr. Thor?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. And how much cost to bring the new wage to sixteen sixty-five? And then how much would it cost to bring it to the eighteen thirty-six?
Thank you for that question. The, in terms of costing out the various recommendations we brought to the board as a part of our overall compensation plan, it, within the budget and overall amount listed in there, we have not individually costed out all the adjustments based on the moving it to a higher amount other than the sixteen sixty-five. But we gave ourselves through December of, of this coming year, December twenty-two, to make these adjustments. And so our plan is, once we see where we are after doing the four point one three percent salary increase, we'll look at our dollars and assess where we are and do the costing out at that time. But between now and then, if you'd like us to give you a preliminary number between now and the next board meeting, we're happy to do that for you.
Yes, I would appreciate receiving that. So how much for the sixteen sixty-five? And then how much more would it be to bring it to the eighteen thirty-six? And then you, you anticipated my next question. Why would we wait to December thirty-first to increase that hourly wage?
So, Dr. Thor, our first priority is to get through the equity work and the four point one three percent increase by July one. And then this is our next priority to move to right after that. So we need to get to July one. We did December thirty-first on the outside of the amount of time it would take as we prioritize the work, but this is the next item in the sequence that we plan to address. And so we plan to begin this work in the summertime. Implementation was no later than December, but we are hoping to move it up because that group is our lowest-paid employees, and we want to make sure that they have enough to support their families.
And also, Dr. Thor, we wanted to make sure we were operating within the allocated budget amount that's been approved through the compensation plan.
And then my last question relates to part-time advisors. And I, you know, I know I may have a new title, but you know who I'm talking about. Because I recall in the last year or so seeing an advertisement for part-time advisors indicating that the hourly wage was fifteen dollars an hour, which clearly is below that hourly wage for a livable wage. How do positions like part-time advisors, how are they impacted by these proposals?
So we are proposing, Dr. Thor, a, a, for all of our part-time employees, a four point one three percent increase this year on top of those part-time rates. As you might recall, last year, the recommendation brought to the board was a twenty-five cent increase. So this four point one three percent is a more favorable approach for our part-time employees. And so we are proposing that those folks be increased as well. Does that address your question?
So is, not completely. So is it possible after implementation of this recommendation that we would have part-time people making less than sixteen sixty-five an hour?
The proposal is, I know our proposal's for the full-time rates to be the livable wage. So I understand the question is, will there be part-timers making less than that? I will need to go back and follow the team on that one to give the answer for that one for our part-time staff.
Yeah, I would be interested in the answer to that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Does anyone else have a comment on this item? I, I would add my sentiments to Dr. Thor's, and if it is possible to send us as all the board members, the financial cost of any sort of adjustment pursuant of what she was talking to, would you please do that?
Yes, we will. President Sullivan will get that information to the board as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, board members? Being none, I'm going to move us to item number four, the consent agenda, approval of, approval of the project initiation and pre-construction phase services for the mechanical system replacement and upgrade and remodel at the district office in an amount not to exceed twelve million dollars. Dr. Gonzalez, I think you might have some comment on this before we move into questions and answers for the board.
Yes, President Sullivan, I do appreciate the opportunity to provide some comments. And I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Kim Grineo, our interim Vice Chancellor of Finance, to offer some comments here and provide some context to this request that may better inform what we're asking for here and what may be, may appear to be a very general request. So, Kim, would you please take it away?
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. President Sullivan and members of the governing board, I appreciate the opportunity to provide a little bit more context for the record. So the replacement of the district office main building's HVAC and ventilation mechanical system was identified in the deferred maintenance study that was completed by Sightline some years back as it was approaching the end of its useful life. This study is the basis, I'm sure you'll recall, for Maricopa's deferred maintenance program as a whole. During the pandemic, our facilities crews across Maricopa were monitoring exchange rates of air per guidance from the CDC, essentially bringing in more outside air into our enclosed buildings. Much of Maricopa's buildings were able to increase the ventilation to preferred levels under pandemic conditions, but it was determined that this could not be done for the district Support Services Center main building. Much of the issue is due to the age of the HVAC mechanical system, which is original to the building from the early nineteen eighties. Once this deficiency was noted, an engineer was contacted to determine what was needed to remedy the situation. After all of these reviews and our understanding that replacing the mechanical and ventilation systems would likely be needed, other options were explored over the latter half of calendar year twenty twenty-one. Options included building a new building somewhere else, raising the current building and starting over, and many other options as well. After considering all of these options, replacing the mechanical systems in the current district Support Services main building made the most economical sense. This action item specifically is requesting conceptual approval for an amount not to exceed twelve million dollars for this project. Included in this project is the replacement of the building's HVAC and ventilation systems. The estimated cost for the equipment and work to put it in place is in the range of six to eight million dollars and will be funded by the Deferred Maintenance Program capital funding. We are reviewing proposals now for a CMAR, and such a contract will come to the board for consideration in the coming months. The remaining total project budget requested is to potentially update how the district Support Services main building functions. Because the replacement of the ventilation system requires the removal of every ceiling on every floor of the building, if the desire is to move to a hybrid work environment as allowed by governing board policy, it is an appropriate time for us to update the functionality of our workspaces to reflect that shift. If the governing board supports this project, the district Support Services leadership team will begin conversations in earnest to vision how this would work. Any construction work for this effort would be done in tandem with the construction needed to replace the ventilation system. We would certainly expect some savings to be realized with this approach by having to touch a space only one time. If in the end it is determined that no physical changes are needed, none will be made. Any remodeling efforts will be funded by the district office capital balances. Finally, any contracts for any work requiring governing board approval will come to the board for consideration, as is board policy. This request for conceptual approval is to ensure that we are transparent with our direction. Thank you again very much for letting me provide a little bit more context and get this into the public record as to the due diligence that has been performed to ensure we make the best decision possible. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grineo and Dr. Gonzalez. With that, this should be somewhat familiar to the board members, but I'm going to ask for comments or questions, and I'll start with you, Mrs. Nguyen.
Thank you. And Kim, thank you. And obviously, we had a detailed conversation. I think the, the concern I made with costs flowing up for construction and us approving this amount, is there any way with whatever contract we hire to have a, whatever bid number they give us, ask the bid number that it is? There's a lot of people in construction right now that are building, and they are told it's this amount, and it's because of inflation and supply chain issues and everything else, it's double or something different. And I'd hate to see the community college, this is a big amount, I'd hate to see an unintended bill get heated because of supply issues.
Thank you, Mrs. Nguyen, President Sullivan. So my understanding of this process is that we will do a GMP, a Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract. And as soon as we have pricing on, for instance, the equipment, we will be able to lock that equipment in when we purchase it. Even if it is a lead time of six months, we will still get the price that we have agreed to. So I, I think Gary Eberhart is on the line, I'm quite sure he is, as well as David Martin, if they need to clarify anything about that, but that is my understanding. And what our hope is, is that if we have approval to move this project forward, as soon as we get quotes and bids that we can move forward with, we'll do so and lock those prices in. That is our intention.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mrs. Nguyen?
So sorry, I have other comments. I apologize. That was good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
I very much appreciated that Ms. Grineo reached out to board members individually to discuss this project and answer questions, and I'm satisfied with the information that we've received and have no further question.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
No questions from me. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Dr. Norini?
Just quickly, this, just one quick one. This will bring us up to code for the, for the building, right? To the current code. I know it was, it was that code when we built it, but this will bring us up to the current code, correct?
President Sullivan and Dr. Norini, yes, it will.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath.
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
I, too, had the, the advantage of talking to Ms. Grineo, which is very helpful. She answered my questions then, so I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
I have no questions.
Great. Then with that, I'm going to move us to the next item on our consent agenda for next week, and that would be approval of approval of expenditure budgeted funds not to exceed seven million dollars for district marketing to contract with any approved vendors under RFP number three, four, four, seven, dash, six, for digital marketing services for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. And again, Dr. Gonzalez, I know there were some questions previous as this was posted. Do you want to offer any comment and then allow us for questions and comments from the board members?
Absolutely. President Sullivan, thank you again for the opportunity to provide some context in front of the questions that might help answer some. And of course, we're happy to answer any additional questions that you may have. Before doing that, I'll turn it over to, to the, to the Matts. That's Matt Hassan and, and Matt Freed. Matt Hassan, our Chief Communications Officer, and Matt Freed, our Director of Marketing and Advertising, that can provide you some context behind this request.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, President Sullivan. This is Matt Freed, and I'm the interim Chief Marketing Officer here at the district. And this request is not asking for any new money. It is basically a request to be able to spend the money that we are budgeted, plus a little extra because of some situations that occur when colleges ask us to increase our campaigns for them. So it does go over our allotted amount of five million. So this request is really just an approval to be able to spend digital marketing services because that's usually a very large amount, and it usually has to be turned around very quickly. So we've run into some issues in the past where it's the end of the academic year, there's some salary savings, and we get asked to increase the campaign for a certain college by, say, five hundred thousand dollars. In order to do that, it's June or it's May, we need the ability to do that very quickly. So basically, this is an approval to make sure that we can be agile with our digital marketing.
Thank you. Board, the board members or Mr. Hassan, do you, well, for a Board, board members, or Mr. Hassan, do you, well, for us, let me go, Mr. Hassan, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, ma'am, that covers it for us.
Well, President Sullivan, this is Stephen.
Yes.
If I may ask, if I may ask either of the, of the Matts to, to discuss what is digital marketing as opposed to a non-digital approach, I would imagine that a question that might arise is, would there be a request down the road that would present non-digital marketing campaigns?
Yeah, I can take that one. This is Matt Freed again, and the answer is yes, there's probably a request that would come through. Typically, those requests are not as time constrained, and they usually don't exceed $250,000. A great example is if someone came to us and said, hey, we want to do a postcard to every high school household in the valley, well, that's about 108,000 households, and we can do that for about $31,000. So, there, there isn't this need to have that approval ahead for anything but digital because it's so expensive. And some of those digital channels that we're talking about are things like paid social, so that's Instagram, that's TikTok, that's Snapchat, and Facebook, and then also things like paid search, which we do PPC, pay per click, and that is through Google, and then we also do programmatic display, which is really putting those animated web banners, those are these retargeting ads that you see if you really like a pair of shoes, and you go online and you shop for these shoes, but you don't buy them, yet you get ads served to you later on that just happen to be the same shoes, that's called retargeting, that's part of this digital marketing that we're talking about.
Thank you. With that, then, Dr. Gonzalez, unless there's anything else, I'm going to ask the board members for comments or questions.
Thank you, that, that concludes my questions for them.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do you have any comments or questions on this item? I'll give you a moment.
The President Sullivan?
Yes, Ms. Bittersmith?
Just to follow up to, to Dr. Gonzalez's question, which was going to be part of my question, I'm not sure, perhaps I missed it, that we got an answer to, that a confirmation that this is very much limited to programs that are distinctly digital, and that these funds are segmented from other marketing funds, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Board member, any other board member with a comment or question?
I have several, I can wait.
That's fine, Mrs. Nguyen, go ahead.
So, what I think I heard is that there's $5 million already allocated through your current budget, so asking for $2 million above because you have a timeframe constraint that would not allow a normal process to come to us through the board, and want the $2 million to do your digital campaign, did I hear that correctly?
So, President Sullivan, board member Nguyen, we're not actually asking for more money, so we're not asking for an, an extra $2 million. What we're asking for is the ability, if someone like a college, or say, the chancellor himself wants to do, or do some more marketing, or needs to do some very quickly, like what happened with the pandemic was also a great example, we wanted to get a campaign out very quickly, and we were able to do that, so what we're doing is if we get monies on budget from other areas at the college level or the district level, that we would be able to spend that in digital marketing. So, we're not really asking for more budget. That makes sense.
Okay, so these are budget funds, and you're telling that not 67 million is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, so you mentioned in your example of being able to mail to, I think it was 108,000 high schoolers, is that, or maybe high school seniors, that you could do like a digital, or non-digital, like a non-digital piece, where you would mail it to them, correct?
It does.
And that would be like 31,000?
Correct.
So, if you, 31,000 is, is not that much, first to this, is there a way to reach them non-digitally, to tell them to connect digitally, and provide them some kind of incentive to do that so that we could? I'm just looking from a cost standpoint.
Sure, sure, yes.
Or do we have, let me set to this, and then you can answer the whole thing, and do we have a way that if we're reaching them digitally, what we know what our response level is, is our ad effective? I understand the shoes and buying, and I get that all the time, but what about, what is our effective rate, our reaching our market, our, our target market, and are we seeing the return on the money that we're spending? We're spending a lot of money digitally, but are we seeing the return? Because I'm not seeing the return in enrollment, so I don't know what you're, and clicks to me are great if people look at it, but it, the end result is if our messaging is not resulting in more students, then I don't think the marketing is effective.
Sure.
Okay, so take that and do what you will.
Sure, yeah, there's a lot of good questions. So, the first one is, yes, we can reach out to them in non-digital formats, and we do. We definitely do a surround sound mix of marketing so that we do send out, how we know that it costs that much for those postcards is because we actually do that, and some of our advertising, so we definitely do that as part of the mix, but we want to hit them from everywhere, right? So, digitally and print and traditional billboard, so we do that. And then, for the second question was, are our ads effective, and is our messaging working? Well, it is working. We do have the numbers that indicate, so for this year alone, we already have 72,000 leads and 7,500 completed applications from our marketing alone. So, we're not looking at marketing influence, we're just looking at the people who actually were touched by our marketing ads. So, we know that we're doing a good job, because what that tells us, based on the money we've invested, that that's around $20 a lead and about $200 a completed application. Now, I know that enrollments are down, so it's hard for me to sit here and say that our marketing is effective if enrollments are down, but marketing is just the first step of the journey, right? So many other things have to fall into place in order for a student to enroll, so we can get them to be a lead, and then that student has to go on the rest of the journey. That's why we're involved with the Student Affairs Team, the Economic Affairs Team, ITS, around that, send the student enrollment management journey. So, while the enrollment is not going up, which is really a national issue, and really not a marketing issue, around the external forces happening around us, right, the economy, if I was a student right now, and if I had the chance, right, to improve my life right now and make $15,000 more a year, or take two years out of my life and make maybe $20,000 to $25,000 in two years, I might choose the, the faster version. I think that's more of what's happening. So, and that's a really long one to that answer.
I, I appreciate it. I think the concern I have is, is we go to the taxpayers and we're saying we're spending money here, there, wherever, they don't, anybody who's in business would say, if you're spending money and you're not seeing the result, the explanation that enrollment is down nationally, it's, it's probably not going to be well received, given the amount of growth that we have in Arizona, and we're the fastest growing state in the country. So, I think I appreciate nationally what's going on, but we really are in a growth mode in our state, and we at community college level, whatever we're doing marketing wise, we're not benefiting from that, because we're not seeing it in our enrollment. So, I, I, I'm not against you marketing, I, I am, I would look to see the effectiveness of our marketing, and I think that's the disconnect is because the marketing itself is reaching people, but yet people aren't taking the actions we need, which is enrolling, and there's a whole process to it, you're absolutely correct, you are just one piece of that. So, there's something that we need providing as a community college in order to make these dollars that we're spending to attract students more, we, we need to have a better connect, we need them to buy our shoes, to use your example. So, I think that that's what, where I get a little crazy about, the amount of money that we're seeing, I'm not saying no result, but not the results that if I was in business, I would be allowed to continue to spend this kind of money marketing with the lack of results we're seeing. And if I say to the taxpayer, well, that's just the way it is, it's this way nationally, I, I would like you to be standing next to me when they say that. So, I just, I want, I want, I want, I don't want to beach or bust your chops, but I want you to be aware that you're asking for $7 million, which is a lot of taxpayer dollars, and they're going to want to know where is it going and what is the result it's costing, okay?
Okay, Mrs. Nguyen, thank you very much, and Mr. Freed, thank you for answering that question. We have had enrollment presentations, I believe in a, well, not I believe, I know, in a workshop, and I believe at some point we're scheduled to have another update relatively soon. On the meeting date, if this is not something you can support, Mrs. Nguyen, certainly we can remove item number five from the consent agenda at your bidding next week and put it in for action, unless that's what you're asking for now.
I, I, I would, I would probably remove this next week, so if you want to remove it now, that'd be great. I, I want to hear more. Thank you.
Okay, recognizing that this would be restricted to a discussion on marketing, not on enrollment, so I just want to be clear that as it comes off as a consent agenda item, it would speak to this specific item, not the greater conversation, and that, I believe there are some materials from our last work session where we did address the enrollment issues and concerns, and certainly we can move forward with another work session in the cycle as we had talked about as a board. So, I appreciate your comments, and I will, we will note that item five will come off as an action item, for greater understanding of the $7 million tied to digital marketing only. And Mr. Freed, perhaps there could be some additional slide about impact, but I do want to again repeat that this would not be an enrollment discussion per se.
I understand, I, I also, I understand what you're saying, Mrs. Sullivan, I also just, I'm not trying to, I, the marketing is, maybe it's just awareness marketing, but I want to, I, I guess what I would ask them to do is come prepared to say, here's the marketing we're proposing, here's what we hope it'll do, here's what we're targeting, and here's who we're targeting, so that, because, is that, because then enrollment happens or it doesn't, but I, I think it's important that we, we're spending $7 million, I'd like to know where it's going.
Yes, that's understandable, and I'm sure Dr. Gonzalez and Mr. Freed, you'll be able, and Mr. Hassan, you'll be able to, to make that presentation.
Yes, Ms. Sullivan, this is Matt Hassan, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, this week we'll, we will ensure that we get the ROI on our marketing efforts to date to the board, whether it's in the snapshot or whatever Dr. Gonzalez directs. And also, it is important to share that the typical, for higher education, it's typically 2% of the operating budget of the institution is invested in marketing. Right now, we're roughly around 0.4%, and the seven, the, the $5 million that we have is an increase from previous years, so we're in a good position, and we're confident with the ROI on our marketing, and I'll ensure the board has that.
Okay, perfect, we'll look forward to that at next week's presentation, then, when it is noted as an action item, of course, for it. So, thank you, I'm going to move us on, board members, if there's an additional question or so that you have tied to item nine, number five, if you could send it in writing through Elsa, and then we can ensure that that answer will be present when this comes up for, as an action item next week. Moving on then to item six, approval of purchase order to Education Management Solutions Total Simulation Recording Management System in a man, in an amount not to exceed $1,011,897 to furnish and install a nursing medical simulation system in the Phoenix College Nursing Department. Are there any comments or questions on that item?
I, I have a question on that.
Dr. Norini, go ahead.
So, will, I, I guess, are these funds going to be coming from student fees, or how are we going to pay for, for this?
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, I would ask, excuse me, President Sullivan, Dr. Norini, I would ask either Dr. Klein, Namu, or Ms. Kim Granio to respond to your question.
I can jump in on this one, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. You're good.
I was just going to share that the, the funding for this, Dr. Norini, is coming from her fund for the virtual environment.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on what is currently item six on the consent agenda? Being then, we'll move to item seven, approval of expenditure budgeted funds, one-time expense not to exceed $395,000 for the replacement of critical network equipment at the District Support Service Center and Scottsdale Air Park Data Centers. Any comments or questions? Being then, moving to item eight, approval of construct, construction contract award in the amount of $947,130 to Southwest Lurie Seal, Inc., for the 2022 Annual Districtwide Summer Pavement Maintenance Program. Any comments or questions?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Mrs. McGrath.
I have to apologize, I assumed that we would whip through this meeting, just like we have the previous agenda setting meetings, and I have another meeting to go to where I'm speaking about the Community College District, so I will not be here for the rest of the discussion, thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, and I'm sorry you also missed our e-session following, but we can direct Ms. Flores to follow up with you if necessary. Thank you. All right, folks, we had number eight on the table, any comments or questions on that? Item nine, approval of DOB ordered contract PO to SD Grain Builders, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $424,503.24 for renovations in faculty offices 01, 02, and 03 at Glendale Community College. Any comments or questions on number nine? Being then, we'll move to item 10, approval of approval of renewal of student insurance program policies for fiscal year 22, 23 as follows. Mutual Omaha Accident and Catastrophic, effective August 1, 2022 to July 31, 2023, and Wellfleet Insurance Company International Student Insurance, effective August 11, 2022 to August 10, 2023. Any comments or questions? Being then, item 11, approval of intergovernmental agreement between Chandler Gilbert Community College and the City of Chandler to hire and support a shared CGCC employee to lead workforce development, pipeline, internship, job shadowing, and industry-based job experiences with the City of Chandler for CGCC students. Any comments or questions? Item 12, approval of approval of the appointment of Heather Murray as the Healthcare United Gateway Clinic Administrator at Gateway Community College under AAC Rule 9-10-1003B3. Any comments or questions? Moving on to item 13, approval of curriculum item courses, we have two deletions, we have two modifications, and four new items. In the occupational programs, we have 11 modifications and two deletions. Any comments or questions on item 13? Being then, we'll note then what stands for the consent agenda for next week, noting that we will have a, an action item pulled from the current consent agenda, agenda as presented, that would be item five duly noted, Ms. Macias. And then, from that, we'll move into our first read in information. Item one will be employment and separations from March 19, 22 through April 22, 2022. We'll also have first read of a revised policy 2.0, chancellor limitations and responsibilities, and we will have a first reading of the proposed fiscal year 22, 23 faculty and in And we will have a first reading of the proposed fiscal year 22, 23 Faculty and Administration Collaboration to EMI-EFACT Agreement that goes into effect July 1, 2022. Are there any questions or comments in those three items?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor?
Um, I have a question about, uh, the Chancellor, uh, limitations and responsibilities. I'm interested in what, uh, what was the review process? Um, and who was involved in the review process? So in other words, uh, you know, we're, we're making a lot of changes here, and I just want to be sure that they were reviewed, not only from moving to the negative to the positive, but that they, uh, were also, uh, viewed with, uh, the lens of, uh, you know, accuracy to our current, uh, procedures and, and our current climate.
Right. Um, Ms. Smith, are you still with us? I know you have to leave at some point.
Yes. I'm here.
Okay. Please, would you care to answer that?
Um, I don't, I will admit, I don't. Can you please reframe the question? I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
I, well, let me just, uh, say from what I understand, Dr. Thor, uh, you remember that we reviewed this at the board retreat? Ms. Smith was charged to work with Ms. Tony on this. So is that what you're asking for?
I, I remember all of that, of course.
Yeah. No, I know you do.
So my question, my question is who was involved in revising this language? And besides moving it from negative to positive, were these, uh, new policies viewed from the point of view of, uh, consistency with our current practices and our current culture? Another, were the only people who looked at this, Teresa Tony and Jacqueline Smith? Was the chancellor involved in this? Did it go through C E C? Uh, where else has this been?
So President Sullivan, I'll, I'll be happy to answer that question.
Please. Go ahead.
Yes. Dr. Thor, we had, uh, several members of my cabinet, and some of those are also members of C E C. Not all of C E C had an opportunity to review these, but I asked, uh, you know, each of the heads of, of departments such as H R, our finance, our I T, and others, to look at areas that were specific to the areas that they oversee to ensure that we, what we have currently in these limitations remains, um, accurate, as you described, is it aligned with current policy? And so in addition to, um, you know, changing these to have a more, um, positive, uh, theme about them, the additions that you see in the red line, um, of these are really updates, if you will, to what we currently do, but was not reflected in the limitations previously. So there isn't anything, yes, there isn't anything that's brand new that we're doing additionally. What you're seeing now is a better reflection of what we actually do.
And so, uh, you know, we've talked in the past about the fact that the chancellor interpretations have not been updated in many years. Um, are you satisfied that these new chancellor interpretations are reflective of how you want to be monitored?
Uh, yes, yes, I am, Dr. Thor. I had an opportunity to review those. And again, I had members of the cabinet and some members of C E C also review those for accuracy and ensuring that we were on the same page with how we interpreted those.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Um, any other comments or questions on that? Um, being done then, uh, we would then move from first read in the information on the three items noted to monitoring reports. Then the governing board will give their community linkage for an event summaries. And as noted on the agenda, uh, review, you see upcoming meetings for June as currently known. Uh, with that, then we will conclude our meeting at, uh, next Tuesday evening. Want to remind everyone that the June, uh, that this meeting will be also virtual, this May 24 meeting. Then what we will do is, uh, continue the process of virtual meetings through June, looking to convene our meetings, our board meetings in person beginning in August. Hopefully, unless there's some surge or some such thing. But anyway, um, that's what I know today. So with that, uh, I'm going to adjourn the agenda review conversation. And board members, as you know, we now move to executive session. You also know that there is a link to do that in your emails. And we will dismiss ourselves from WebEx and move to Google meets. I'll call the meeting to order, uh, recognizing that Ms. Smith will not be with us, nor will, uh, Mrs. McGrath. That leaves five of us to be present, uh, for the executive session. With that then, good night, everyone. Thank you for your attendance. And board members, I'll meet you in a few minutes. Thank you.